Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you all to the February 2nd, 2023 Regular Meeting of the Enlarged City School District of Middletown. I'm going to call the meeting to order at this time, and I'm going to ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Crazzenzo, would you please lead us in the pledge? And I believe that Mr. Perino has a moment of silence afterwards, so I'd ask you to please remain standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, President Tobiasin. Caring, compassionate, a role model, a people person, well-rounded, a man of great faith. These are some of the descriptors which can be applied to Clifford Martin Graham. Clifford Martin Graham, the brother of our Assistant Superintendent for Instruction, Camille Adamo. And if I might, please. Clifford Martin Graham, who known as Martin, alumni of Middleton High School in South Carolina, truly a people person. Anyone who crossed his path, whether it was for 10 years or 10 minutes, would agree that he was caring, sincere, and humorous. Martin loved the Lord. At an early age, he gave his life to Christ, became a member of the Graham, AME Zion Church. During that time, he served in numerous roles, as a member of the youth group, combined choir and trustee group. In 2018, Martin became a member of the First Baptist Church, remained a member until his death. He enjoyed everything about football. After Martin's playing days in high school, he spent several years as a volunteer coach in West Ashley Middle School in North Charleston. He proved to be a positive role model for the players while instilling a love of the game in football. Outside of the football, Martin's interests including watching TV and movies, singing, playing fantasy football, fishing and crabbing. Remember what I said around, well-rounded person. He found the most joy in spending time and having conversations with his family. He was also known, interestingly enough, as a great cook and famous for his banana pudding. That's the kind of person I would have liked to have known. And the words that I said about Martin, the descriptors, I have to say they can be very well applied to Assistant Superintendent Camille Adamo. In addition, I have to say this, and please remember Martin and your thoughts and prayers. One other person, the murder of Tyree Nichols in Tennessee. You know, maybe I'm getting older, but there's certainly some absolutes in this life, and one of them is you don't beat a person to death. And that goes with some other absolutes, like you don't attack a house of worship. There's been too much of that. There's been too much of attacks on people of the Jewish faith, antisemitism. It's not right. And I would hope that instructional staff goes over some of this with us, too. I'm sure they do. We have a great staff, so please remember everyone again in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Perino. Mr. Mitch Williams, would you please read the mission of the Enlarged City School District of Middletown?
Yes, we strive to provide fiscally sound educational opportunities in a safe environment that continuously supports our diverse student population. We will enable all students to graduate, to reach their full potential, to become lifelong learners, and to become competitive, productive members of society.
More than I knew.
Mrs. Tobiasin?
Yes, Mr.?
Before we get into the other portion of the meeting, more formal portion, I'd like to suggest that as a board, we place our cell phones, as an example, in these yonder pouches, as a support to the central administration, the administration of the high school, and the direction of Dr. Williams, the teachers of the high school, and to enhance learning of the students in the high school. So I'm going to do this, and I would invite anybody else to do this. Just a suggestion.
Thank you, Mr. Perino. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
I'm sorry. I just got, I gotta get back in the groove, folks. I need a roll call vote first. Sorry about that.
Mrs. Blumenau?
Here.
Mr. Crazzenzo?
Here.
Mr. Gomez?
Here.
Mrs. Houston?
Here.
Mr. Perino?
Here.
Mrs. Tobiasin?
Here.
Mr. Freddie Williams?
Here.
Pastor Williams?
Here.
Mr. Mitchell Williams?
Here.
Now may I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Pastor Williams, seconded by Freddie Williams. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. I need an approval for the regular minutes from the January 19th, 2023 meeting. May I have a motion to approve these minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Gomez. I need a second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Crazzenzo. Any discussion? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Moving on to action items. 14A, we have none at this time. Under instructional B memorandum, 14B, 1 through 12, I need a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mitch or John, moved by John, seconded by Vince. Any discussion on 1 through 12, 14B? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? May I have a motion to approve the non-instructional personnel memorandum, 14C, 1 through 8?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded by Pastor Williams. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item D, the financial memorandum, 14D.
So moved.
I need, moved by Mr. Perino, seconded by Mrs. Blumenau. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Please note, one opposition, Ms. Houston. I need an approval of the special service memorandum, 14E, 1 and 2. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded by Mr. Crazzenzo.
Pastor.
Pastor Williams. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. On change orders, we do not have any at this time.
Correct.
Okay, so we can move right on.
Mrs. Tobiasin, we need to, we need to make a motion to change the agenda to add what was discussed in executive session.
Okay.
A motion to amend the agenda.
To add action item G.
Okay. I need to back up, and I need to, we need to amend the agenda. I need a motion to amend the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Crazzenzo, seconded by Mr. Perino. Any discussion?
I'm not certain what this is in regards to.
It was discussed in executive session?
Yes, and the reason I don't go to executive session, I won't bring here, but it's a legitimate reason. So, Mrs. Tobiasin, if there's anything you can share publicly that wouldn't compromise any of the information, I guess I'll have to abstain from that vote.
You're very welcome. So I'm amending the agenda for item 14, 14B.
G.
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 G. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yes, for action item G. Any discussion?
I've decided to vote.
I had the motion from Vince and, was John Perino, I believe.
You asked for discussion, though.
Pardon me?
You asked for discussion, that was why I spoke up. I've decided I'm going to oppose the vote since you couldn't share anything with me. Thank you.
Man, sure.
All, all in favor?
No, I wasn't here because I couldn't make it, but I'm going to abstain for no fairness.
Fine, understand. You're not opposing or you're not abstaining from amending the agenda, though?
No, 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 for the vote, because I was trying to make it to the discussion.
Thank you.
For no fairness and the next.
Okay, understood. We have amended the agenda. I have the motion, discussion from?
So may I ask, may I ask, just for the sake of clarity, for the sake of clarity, I'm all for amending, amending the agenda. I understand what the item is, but just for the sake of clarity, can we just, for the sake of clarity, I know we can't explain it in detail, but the reason why we can't explain it in detail is because it is a personnel item, it's a personnel issue, and that's why we can't explain it in detail and so publicly. So just for the sake of clarity for our other board members, I just wanted to make sure that that was brought out.
I do want to ask our parliamentarian, usually items go on the agenda 24 hours in advance with public notice. Is this something that's excluded from that?
There, I don't believe there's nothing wrong with amending because it's an issue that came up since then, so when emergency issues do come up, you could amend agendas.
So the item is an emergency issue?
It came up since, since.
It's a time sensitive.
Time sensitive.
It's a time sensitive issue.
I mean, to use a better word, it's time sensitive. Yeah, anything could happen from the moment the agenda, I mean, the board does set it 24 hours in advance or 48 hours in advance. Sometimes items do come across that issues arise, and they have to be amended, just like we've had situations where the presidents over the years have to, board members have to call emergency executive sessions because something came up that we need more time. So there's nothing wrong with it.
Thank you. So there's a second follow-up, a question I have then with regard to executive session material. It's always been my understanding that when there is an executive session item, that members who are privy to the executive session item may be told in private what that issue is, and that's how it used to be here many, many years, like two, three years ago. So that's recently changed. So what I'd like to do is ask you, is that something that is still allowable or has the law changed? Or were we somehow making a mistake in the past?
I don't understand, I don't understand what you're saying.
I'll, I'll address it. What was discussed in executive session was accessible to the board members on the agenda that was released to you.
Not the new item, though.
It is. It's been on there since Friday.
It was an error.
The error was just adding the motion to approve. That's it.
I now understand. Thank you.
Because it's a.
I'll point it out to you if you'd like. No, no, I just misunderstood what was happening here. Thank you.
No, because it's a personnel matter that's sensitive. We, as part of our fiduciary duties, we do, we do protect the confidentiality of our personnel, whether it's a positive or negative decision, so that we cannot be discussed in open air.
Yes, where are we? So we have amended the agenda to include that item.
We have a motion on the table.
We have the motion. I'm calling now for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm in favor now since I see that. Thank you.
Any opposed? So it passes unanimously. Are we all set? Okay.
Now, now we vote on the item.
Right, yes. I need now to vote to approve that item.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vince.
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Pastor. Any discussion?
I'm going to abstain since I wasn't here for the discussion.
And due to the fact that I was not here for discussion because of a situation beyond my control, in the interest of fairness, I will abstain as well.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstain.
Seven, two, I can count again. I'm going to move on to item seven, Board Member Recognitions and Community Updates. Freddie, I'm going to turn it over to you first.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm excited to acknowledge the Middletown Youth Football D1 Team, who had a stellar season, undefeated all the way through and won the Super Bowl. And the way that system is set up, I wish they could have kept going, like to other states and stuff like that. Our team is that good. Seriously, great coaches, great family support. So at this time, I'd like to invite to the microphone, the podium, Coach Mo, representing the D1 Middletown undefeated Super Bowl champions.
Do you want to give a little bit of a crowd or something?
Yeah, bring your, bring your team up, which is, yeah.
If one of you coaches want to read off the roster, that's fine, too.
Turn on, is the microphone on? There's a green light if you press the button on there. It's a green light.
Okay, Ethan Arondell, Jonah Batista, Elijah Brown, Jacob Carey, Matthew DeGroot, Liam Flynn, Raymond Gray, Gianni Lawrence, Carter Lewis, Owen McZorn, Jacob Price, True Myers, Mason Reynolds, Santino Rivera, Suprel Roman, Corey Royal, and Paul Stewart Jr.
And Xander Robinson.
And Xander Robinson. Excuse me. Well, I guess I'm speaking then. First off, I just want to say thank you to you guys for the invitation. We're really appreciative and honored to be here. For me, I was here last year with the older kids, so it's a pleasure to be back. The kids worked extremely hard this year. We had a great support system, like Freddie said. The parents were involved, you know, the coaches were involved. The community was behind us this year, and it was, it was just, it was truly amazing to see these kids grow the way they did throughout the year. You know, a lot of these kids never even played football before. You know, back in August, you know, we're sitting around as coaches huddled up, trying to figure out how we're going to make it work, how we're going to simplify things, and I can't tell you how proud we are of these kids, the work they put in, week in, week out, you know, every game, they grew as a team, they grew as brothers, and I think it's a true testament to where we're at as a community, and I'm just, I'm truly proud and just want to say thank you guys for having us here. Thank you.
I love those sweatshirts that you have on. Perhaps you'd like to introduce those team members that are here?
We're going to start down. We got Matthew DeGroot.
Stand up, Matthew.
Ethan, where you at, Ethan?
Come on up, guys.
Ethan's up here? Ethan, you here? Come on, Ethan, come up here, Ethan. Matt, come up here. Jonathan, where you at, Jonathan? Elijah? Jacob? Terry, where you at, buddy? Matthew's up here already. Liam, where you at, Liam? Good seeing you. Raymond Gray, where you at, Ray? What else we got? What else we got up there? Carter Lewis? Owen? Jacob? Little Jacob, where you at? Little Jacob. True Myers? Mason? Mason not here? Tino, where Tino at? Suprel? Corey? Tony? And my boy's in. Come on, man. It starts right here with the youth, y'all. This is where it starts, all the way up to the high school, getting into varsity. This is where, this is where it starts, right here with them. So hopefully you'll see these faces again and on the field some more. We appreciate your support and being there for us. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
We're going to take a picture.
Can I have a word, please?
Yeah, oh yeah, you got it.
If there's anything that youths can do to promote the youth sports, because I played football as a kid, and for years and years, it starts from the little ones, Mighty Mites. In the past two years, we didn't have a Mighty Mites team. So we, if there's anything that youths can do to put promotion out there, to get the kids out so we can have a team, because that's where it starts, you know? If, that's all I have to add, if I could ask if youths can do anything about that.
I think being here tonight with this winning team, that's all the advertising you need, right?
Ah, yeah, put a picture. I appreciate that. Thank you. So all the other coaches had an opportunity to speak. I'd like to say something. I'd like to thank the parents for being here and investing in these young men like they did. All the parents showed up, and they all helped us out. They helped us out on the field. They helped out with transportation. They made sure that these, these young men got the proper rest they needed, and they gave them direction to help us do our job better. You know, it was, it was unique circumstance. Like Coach said, we had a bunch of young men who have never played football before, and as a parent, you know, my, my children play college football right now, and I played football well into my 40s. As a, as a parent, it's hard to turn your child over to anybody else, and they turned their children over, and they allowed us to work the way that we need to work to get this done. So like, to echo what Coach said, we need to have some more participation from the community. If we can do anything, outreach, get some more kids down, I think we could make Middletown Youth Football very successful now and in the years to come. Fred, that was great what you said about maybe taking this on and moving, going to other states and going to other counties. The rest of the counties around here didn't want to play us anymore, no more. Monroe didn't want to see us. Nobody else wanted to see us, but these young men did something that was remarkable, and we felt, we feel that we need to extend this more. Thank you.
Thank you for all that you do.
Also, I would like to say it's refreshing that seeing a lot of Middletown alumni represents the coaching up there. So, you know, being from Middletown and then seeing these guys with minis across their chest, it's very refreshing. I want to thank you guys for taking the time. I've coached, and it's a selfless job, and it takes time and effort and energy, right? You take energy, you know, time from your family and your job, and I just want to commend you guys for doing that.
And you're absolutely correct. This is where it starts.
Yep.
And, and the parental support and the kids that are involved, so thank you.
I can't, I can't let this moment go without Coach Mitch saying something because he's, he's a coach, and he's been coaching a little longer than me. I'm not going to say how much longer.
I'm just excited about this, you know, seeing you guys, because I've seen when you guys started, and excellent job, just all of you, excellent job. I mean, this is what, when we talk about it takes a village, this is what it's all about, with us collaborating together and just doing the best we can for the families. And thank you to the parents so much, because I know to take time to get up and, you know, we all know what it is. And, and it feels good to come to this point, but then to know we're going to do it again next year. I'm just saying, all right?
Yes, very.
That's right. Thank you. Thank you all so much.
Thank you very, very, very much.
Sure. Can I just ask a quick question? How old are the Midi Mites? Mighty Mites? Five through, so they start at five, and what, when do you start practices with the Mighty Mites? Midi Mites? Midi? August, Mighty Mites? Okay.
There's a registry.
So they start in August?
Yes, there's actually a registry opened up right now on social media, Facebook and stuff underneath the Orange County Youth Football, the Middletown Youth Football page, where it's a barcode, you can just scan and register kid. As of right now, you can register them.
Yeah, so we have, we have several universal pre-K programs in our community, many, and we partner with so many organizations for those universal pre-K programs, and if you did a little tour through those programs in the spring to recruit for that August start date, I bet you would see, you would get that program up and running.
We'll take that information and run with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, any contact on that information?
We have all the contact information.
All right, we'll reach out to you about that.
Yeah, we have all the contact information you need.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's get a picture over here, right?
Yep.
Future Brady's. I'll now return to item seven on our board agenda, Board Members' Recognition.
Congratulations again to the.
Nicole?
Football.
Is your mic on?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's just the background noise, it's fine. I don't really have a lot this evening. I just want to congratulate our football players again, and to, just to update, I usually do my homework right on the day the agenda comes out, and I had a lot going on this weekend, but as Ms. Monchery can attest, my internet was out all day, and I called her about that, so I. her about that. So I did apologize, I do apologize for missing that item on the agenda. Also, just please stay tuned for something that's coming great to Middletown in, as a way of a basketball program, parents. So, thank you. I'll be bringing more information about that. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Mitch Williams.
I'm gonna take this time to just recognize the, the police department that we have, the Middletown Police Department, as well as the Wallkill Police Department. I want to recognize Chief Wanchu and Sergeant Welsh, as well as Lieutenant Dolan, as well as our SROs, and just the work that they're doing with our kids in this community. Freddie and myself and a few others have been collaborating with them based on certain behaviors that we see in the community, and they've just been excellent as far as even working with the school and everything else like that. We are fortunate to have the police department such as this, as well as Rosie from the Wallkill Police Department. It's just the collaborations that we've been doing and the interventions that we have been doing have been great and have been very effective. And I just definitely wanted to acknowledge them for the great job that they're doing.
Thank you. Pastor Williams.
I don't have much tonight, but I do want to make sure that we acknowledge that as we've entered into the second day of February, that this is African-American History Month. And it cannot be capsulated within just 28 days. Our history, our history as African-Americans, as Black people in general, is, is, is far spanning beyond what we can actually put within 28 days. And we don't just celebrate in the month of February, we celebrate every day. But with that being said, the acknowledgement of it during this time is important. There are many programs and many presentations and things that's gonna be going on in our schools. I don't have a particular list as of now. I requested one, but there are some other, there are some things that are gonna be happening in and around our community and around our county and throughout the state. And so I think that it's important for us to make sure that we recognize that and honor that these are tough times. And these are tough times, and we've seen some, some pretty horrific things in the past couple of years. And while there are many that are trying to suppress, suppress our history as African-Americans, we fight even more diligently to make sure that our children, our children, and not our children alone, but all children and adults, I need to make sure that I include adults, because we all never stop learning and never stop growing, understand the great, the great sacrifices that were made before, before we even got here. And so we're not, this, this time is not a time of, of just the moment. It's a time of really celebrating the struggles of yesterday, the struggles of today, and understanding that we're standing on the shoulders of those who came before us. So I'll leave that there. Thank you.
Mr. Perino.
Thank you, Mrs. Tobiasin, President Tobiasin. I'm gonna pick up for a moment what Bishop Williams said. I just want to read, as we start Black History Month, a quote from Dr. King. "The function of education is to teach one to think intensively and to think critically. Intelligence plus character. That is the goal of education. And to think critically, you have to have knowledge." And this is what our, our staff, our great staff does, to give students knowledge. And if you look around, Emily Lundgren, the high school media chair and the district chair, she's already put up a number of displays, and the library media department will be one of the departments taking a lead in the celebration of, of Black History Month. Continuing on, a couple of quick announcements. This coming Sunday, Middletown Elks will be having the pancake breakfast, 8:00 to 12:00. And our NJ, NJ ROTC unit, under the direction of Chief Slingley, will be assisting the guests, and they'll be receiving a never-ending breakfast for that. They go up for second and third, which is okay. And the price is $12 for adults and $10 for children. And the money raised benefits our community, scholarships and so on. You see the Elks come in for the Elks Student of the Month, which we'll have at the next meeting. Secondly, the Monhagen Middle School, in connection with Black History Month, they'll be presenting the Third Annual Black History Jeopardy. That's gonna be February 7th at 7:00 PM. It's a virtual, this is virtual, the Black History Jeopardy, for the whole family can participate. And a, a link for this virtual event, we will be shared with all the Monhagen students at 6:00 PM Tuesday evening. And Dominic Redoni reminds everyone that you must join with your school account. I was going to start covering my view of, of the concerts and a couple of things about that, but I think I'll end here, because I wanna, I wanna have time to do that. Won't be able to do it in, in one minute and 11 seconds. Thank you.
Very welcome, Mr. Perino. Thank you for your report. Mr. Cosenzo.
Thank you. Principal Sorrentino granted me the honor and the privilege to be the first mystery reader down at Truman Moon Maple Hill Anics. And it was fun. And it happened to be pajama day, and if they had told me, I didn't know. So I can't, I wasn't prepared.
You wanna come in your pajamas?
Why not? So they, they broke up into three groups, the younger ones first, and then middle, and then the older students. And I just happened to pick a book off the table, and it was called Couch Potato. And it was so much fun. I'd never read the book before. And it was about this couch, literally a potato who had everything in his house. He didn't have to get up. There were machines and things that made his dinner, blah, 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 blah. So he got one more device, he plugged it in, blew a fuse. So it was total darkness. So he was forced to go outside, and he had a ball. He had no idea how nice it was to be outside. So interacting with the children, it was a lot of fun. They, they talked about some of the devices they use at home. And I taught third and fourth grade for 12 years at Bosie's, and it felt good to get back into that environment. I almost want to go back to work, and then I said, hmm, maybe not. So the older ones, so I read that book to the two classes, and then the older students, their teacher brought in a book about Lena Horne. And I, I learned so much from that. I had no idea that she was such a civil rights activist. And she did so many things, first, as a, as a Black entertainer. As talented as she was, when they finally allowed Black entertainers to come into conventional theaters and what have you, she had to come in the back door. I mean, you know, but she did not allow that to stand. She constantly pushed forward and is responsible for, at the time, for a lot of the equal rights that were granted to African-American performers. So all in all, it was a lot of fun. I was there for about 45 minutes, almost an hour, and I really, really enjoyed it. And it was a well-oiled clock. These kids came in and sat down, they attended, they watched, and they laughed, and I tried to be as funny as I could. And it was good. It was very enjoyable. So I want to do that once a month, and I'm looking forward to next month. And that's what I got. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Very informative. Mr. Gomez.
Yeah, I just want to remind our public audience in TV, TV land, everybody else, this is the time of the year where our different heads of state delivered their State of the Union, State of the State, State of the City. Governor Hokel delivered the State of the State this week. I know that the President will be delivering the State of the Union in the coming days, and Mayor DiStefano will be delivering the State of the City, as will Town Supervisor Serrano for the town of Wallkill. I think it's important, as a community, we take the time to hear the different state, the, these addresses, because it pretty much outline issues that do affect us when it comes to budget, education funding, public safety, and gives you the opportunity, as the public, as we the people, to express your views, your perspectives, your support in areas you, you want to make sure your elected representatives know that you have their support, or your concerns in areas that you may have concerns. So I encourage everyone to take the time, even the students, those in history world who look into score extra credit to look at the different State of the, different addresses. As for myself, since I was in junior high school, I haven't missed a State of the Union. I've seen everyone from Presidents Reagan, George H.W. Bush, Clinton, George W. Bush, President Obama, Trump, and President Biden, and I encourage our young people to do the same.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Blumenau.
Thank you. So it, it seems like the school year just starts, and then we're already over halfway through, and the first class of, the first Middletown class of 2023, first part, is graduating next Wednesday evening. And I got this beautiful invitation, and so thank you. I plan to be there. So I want to wish congratulations to the first of our graduates. How many, do we know how many? Okay, we're still working on it. Okay, good. It's always fun, because it's our early, a lot of our early grads that are moving, you know, moving forward with college and careers, and awesome. And then some of the students who just need a little bit of extra time to, to meet their goals. Usually it's early grad, a lot of early grads in January, so that's always exciting. So then that leads to us, of course, to be thinking about the fact that it's almost spring. We just skipped right past February, everybody. I wanted to just talk about the annual prom dress extravaganza that Temple Sinai promotes every year, that they've, they've been doing this for, I don't even know how many years it is. I'm thinking it's something like eight years. Yes, it's the eighth annual, I was right, it's the Eighth Annual Prom Dress Extravaganza, which it is. It'll be held at Temple Sinai on March 19th and March 26th. These are both Sundays. It is a free event, and we can, you can, your students can become prom-ready for free. Everything from dresses to shoes to pocketbooks to men's, men's suits, shoes, accessories, jewelry. It's a really fun day. There's usually a DJ, and there's food, and just, it, it really is a great event. But more, most importantly, it is providing a, providing that service so at, at no cost to our students, making sure that they have beautiful dresses and are feeling good. It is a, it is a self-esteem builder, and, and certainly we want our students to feel like a million bucks at zero cost. So if you have gently worn, clean prom attire, whether it be suits or, you know, men's suits, we, we always need more men's attire, and men's shoes, and belts, and things like that, and shirts, if you have that, if you have anything like that, please reach out to Temple Sinai. The, the website for Temple Sinai is templesiniamiddletown.com, and there is the contact information under events. So that's going on now. So we are collecting and making sure that we have enough, enough stuff for everybody. And I hope everyone comes out and enjoys the event. Should be a lot of fun. Thank you.
I'm not sure. Sometimes, you know, open mouth and you make mistakes, but I assume that they also reach out. I think it's Mrs. Glickman that's the advisor for that, and she has this information to pass on to our students?
Yeah, and we're in contact, they've also, the committee is also in contact with the high school administration, so.
Okay, great.
And the district. So it'll be promoted. They're just starting to promote the event now. I just wanted to say, if there's, if anybody has anything for donation, to please, you know, get it, get it to us, so that we can make sure it's in good shape, and just get it out there and on a hanger and ready to go. So, thank you.
Moving on, it is now the opportunity for our public to, oh, sorry.
So I would like to lead off with giving a shout out to everybody. A lot of people in this room with the support for Middletown Youth Sports. It's a non-for-profit organization dealing with our kids in the community, and a bunch of the, the little guys that were up here, they've participated in flag football combines and basketball programs that we have. So speaking for myself, Mr. Mitchell Williams, Everton Brown, Andre Geddes, Samuel Thompson, I'm, I'm gonna figure some names. These are, we were the coaches, we're the directors, and we have great family members that are helping out. And like I said, a lot of people sitting at these tables have supported it, and it's growing fast. For example, we had one travel AAU basketball team in November, and now we're up to four. And looking at a fifth coming like next week. So it's just growing and growing. And this isn't an organization where you have to be super talented and, and experienced, just like they said, a lot of kids on that D1 football team, this was their first experience, and they won, you know? And we always tell our kids, effort and energy, right? That's what it takes. So we will have, we will be rolling out more programs. Right now, we have basketball, we have flag football, and we have boxing. We're looking to link with Mr. Coach Littenstein and Naboa for wrestling after their season's over. So we're, we're growing, and I just want to thank everyone for the support from the city of Middletown, the police department, YMCA, Parks and Rec. And also, that reminds me that we have a date for the next back-to-school barbecue. It would be August 26th. If you missed this one this year, you definitely want to be at the next. We had a couple thousand people at this one. We did it in September. We did it right after school started. This time, we're gonna be ahead of the grade and start before school, and have the pool and full access to the whole Davage Park. Every pavilion, every inch of the park will be ours. So we're looking forward to that. Me and Mr. Mitchell Williams, we sat with Parks and Rec, and we're gonna sit with Superintendent Creedon, Chief Wanchu, Ray Lynn, Nicole from Parks and Rec, and the mayor. And anyone who wants to participate and get involved and jump on the committee, you know, just, just reach out to us. We're looking, we're very excited for this year. Like you said, Paula, the time is just going. We're just gonna be back to school before you know it, you know? So that's that. I want to thank everybody for the support. And also, the MBK meeting we had this Monday was, was great. We had it right here at the high school. The kids were super engaged. The advisory board, we were super engaged, and we got to sit and talk and start to get to know each other. And just the potential these young guys have is, is awesome. It's just about, you know, this, the support, you know, and structure that we're looking to give them. But they were super engaged. Phil Stewart, the director, is doing a great job with the My Brothers Keeper program. So I look forward to, to more meetings and, and getting to know the young guys a little more. And that's what I have. Thank you.
And I forgot something too, so thank you for reminding me. I got an invitation from Twin Towers. You're invited to an ice skating with our students. Come hang out with the seventh and eighth grade students from Twin, and maybe get on the ice. This is Tuesday, February 7th, from 2:15 to 3:15. And it says, we'd love to see you there. So get your skates or just come out and support.
Where is it? Where is the ice rink?
Downtown.
Downtown.
Yeah, it's right down on the, by where the, yeah, the market, the farmer's market. Do they rent skates? Also, they have skates available too?
Yes, yes.
You don't have to have skates, so you can.
So John, you can go and you can skate away.
President Tobiasin?
Okay.
Do they, do they have insurance also, or?
I did forget one, and I, I feel terrible about it. I just wanted to offer my most sincere condolences to the Ingracia family.
Oh, yes.
Who recently lost. Louisa and Lou both represent the town of Wallkill, and I had the pleasure of meeting their lovely mother this, this past summer, and I'm very sorry for their loss. And I have to be leaving a little early this evening. I have family here from out of town, but I promise I will be watching the rest of the meeting as soon as it's up online. I know there's an important budget presentation.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I have everything. But thank you, and have a nice evening, everyone.
All right, I think I can move on now. This is the opportunity for our public to address the board. You're allowed four minutes, and you're not allowed to give your time to another individual. And we have Dr. Johnson. And we have Dr. Johnson.
My name is Paul Johnson. I'm always appreciative of what you're doing.
That, Mike?
Now it's greener. I'm still Paul Johnson. It's very reassuring to me to know that I can still empty a room. So at least I still got the juice for that. Thank you. As far as the council goes, this is the time of year that we get our annual reports for 2022. You have in your possession a couple of those, and I call to your attention the CDA report, Community Development Agency. I've referred to this group prior, but this is the end of our year. So just to review, it's a homeowner buyer situation. It's administered by Past Stone, an outside agency. Buyers have to be eligible. They go through a class training program, first home buyers, first homeowner buyer. What do they do to be eligible? Well, then they're entitled to a low-interest loan, and their only obligation is to stay in the home for 10 years, a minimum of 10 years.
Okay.
In 2022, we took on five new properties, and to date, we have 11 that we have rehabbed and sold. And Maria, the director of the program, wants you to know that we've resulted in putting $57,000 back into the tax rolls, and we've also put $97,000 worth of property on the tax rolls as well. So it's a it's a win-win. Everybody has that house that nobody lives in for a while, and they wonder what's going to happen to it, and we're slowly but surely reclaiming that property. The other item I presented to you, speaking of Park and Recs, where is the ice skating rink? Oh, be still, my heart. We're very proud of that. We opened that up on Black Friday after Thanksgiving. It is where the farmer's market is. We've been thinking about that for a couple of years, and it's been extremely successful. There is a shack there. You can rent skates. We had an unexpected complication. The rink actually thawed the other day because it was 53 degrees, which is not what we were planning. But we contacted Mother Nature. She's turned the thermostat down, and the ice will be very solid over the next few days. I'm just going to call to your attention some of the many programs. Ray Lynn has put them in a monthly order, just to name a few. Boxing, Adult Paint Night, Youth and Teen Paint Night, Youth Martial Arts, Youth Breakdancing Clinics, Youth Cartooning, Adult Craft Night, Kitchen for Kids. We offered free lifeguarding classes. That's a win-win, because as you know, there's been a shortage for lifeguards. And we offer the class as long as you're willing to sign up and be at one of the parks pools. We'll talk about that in a moment. Also in March, compliments of your very own Kevin the Alchemist and Wit, who represents us at the Park and Recs Commission. We've arranged for at least bus transportation one night a week to have students who can't make it out to that part of the city to take part of that. Zumba, Glow-in-the-Dark Egg Hunt, Easter Egg Hunt, Adult Tennis, Fishing Derby, Cops and Kids, Christmas in July, Have the Grinch Still Christmas, a watermelon eating contest, a hot dog eating contest, new playground equipment at Fancher Davage, Rising Stars Basketball, Lacrosse, it goes on. And Ray Lynn has also included a page indicating that our 19 parks total more than 1,500 acres throughout our city. So it's a pretty sizable event. Her goals, 2023, find a better way to communicate with the Hispanic community, continue to work and collaborate with the business community, and to resurface guesting basketball courts. And a three-year goal, turn Maple Hill into a spray pad and handball courts. Your last document is a survey. We do feel that the Maple Hill Park is in disrepair. We do not plan to have another pool there. We will have one at Davage and one at Sproat. We've originally thought about a spray pad, but then Alderman Ray, AKA Graham Cassoon, her name is now Katie Ray, she went back to her maiden name, we're sponsoring a survey, which will be in the water bill to remind you to go online, and you're in possession of the four questions. What ward do you reside in? Have you used the park pools in the past? What would you like to see at Maple Hill? Splash pad, pickleball, green space, and any other suggestions? Thank you very much. My time is up.
I have a question for you. What are?
Sorry, I don't have time. Oh, go ahead.
What are your plans for the field on Monhegan?
The field on Monhegan?
Right. Oh, yeah, the, yeah, Monhegan Avenue, yeah. Plus on the little deli in that.
You mean Woolslayer Field? Is that what you mean?
Is that?
What are our plans for it? Well, that's where some of the football program is. We still have to put the fence up around the field. Is that what you're referring to, Woolslayer Field?
Yes, I just want to do it to progress.
Yeah, that's another sizable investment, and we'll probably put a four-foot cyclone fence around the field just to protect it. And of course, the track will still be open for the public to use as they see fit.
Okay.
Are there any other questions?
Didn't mean to put you on the spot, but when I drive by there, I was wondering what the status was.
I'm mostly ready, but not always. Thank you very much.
I don't have a question, Dr. Johnson.
Oh, man. This is paying back for the ice skating rink job.
My granddaughter came to us every every Friday for the full day, and we went over to Davage Park, the the pool at Davage Park. It is outstanding. The the lifeguards change every 15 minutes. You feel completely safe. They got the very large pools, very, very clean, and they have the splash pad down below. I don't know who had more fun, me or my granddaughter. It was just amazing. And the diversity of the people there is just outstanding. We're every, we were there for maybe two hours every Friday. We just had a great time. So that is a real star for Middletown.
We're glad to hear that. The the evolution of public pools has changed a little bit over the years. Diving boards are kind of out due to insurance issues. Depth is kind of out due to insurance issues. Some towns have put in a wading pool, which is just three feet totally across. So that's where we're kind of thinking more of the splash pad at Maple Hill. But we also want to talk to the community. Do you want another water park there? Maybe people love it. Maybe they didn't. There was a conversation with Ray Lynn about pickleball and the ongoing feud between tennis players and pickleball players. They don't really get along that well in the sandbox. So we thought maybe we could do that. And then, as the mayor said in the survey, maybe just want to keep a green space. So hopefully, the last time we did a monkey survey, as it's called, was when we were looking for input on public music. You know, the sound of public music as to the time it should be available. So it doesn't really garner as much attention perhaps as we like. So I appreciate the opportunity to put that out here in this venue so more people can know about it. Are there any other questions or comments?
I want to echo Mr. Crescendo's sentiments. In fact, I joined him, I think, once or twice with my kids. The memorial pool at the Davage Park is great in addition to the play spray spray pad. I mean, given the rising cost of some of the water parks around, the children and community are getting there at worth a bargain, and for like a dollar or four dollars. Yes, so it's, we hope that continues. And I'm all for more pools.
Well, we're glad to hear that.
Let's hear what the people have to say, but.
You know, as long as I have dispensation for another 30 seconds, and not to stay in my lane, because I don't always stay in my lane. With respect to your conversation about amending the agenda, we post for the council, and you also post, I'll call to your attention, item 13 is your disclaimer, that says you're posting the agenda to the best of your ability at the time, and you reserve the right to amend it as needed. So that's what you decide to do. Thanks.
Thank you. Always great to hear from you, sir. I will note, there are no letters, so I'm going to move on to the superintendent's report, and I will turn that over to our superintendent and our assistant superintendent.
Good evening. Thank you on Board of Education and Community for giving myself and Mr. Tuttle an opportunity tonight to present one of the first components of the budget, the administrative component. So go to the next slide, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. So we just want to remind ourselves always that our, the board's mission statement and charge for the district is what frames all of the work that we do. So we're always focused on fiscal responsibility, rigorous academic programming, and creating health, healthy and safe spaces for our scholars, families, community members, educators, and staff. In the budget development process this year, we springboarded off of last year and really amplified opportunities for us to get feedback and consider all of the multiple components. So up here, this slide just represents all of the places, spaces, people, agencies, representatives that we have been dialoguing with, receiving feedback from, considering in programming development throughout the entire budgeting process. So really want to call out the work that the Fair Funding Committee did. We are fully funded, which is incredible due to their work, which includes board members, community members, our schools, and all of the departments, educators, staff, our PTOs, the audit committee, the work that they do to make sure that our finances all stay in line, our administration, our elected officials, and the partnerships we have there, community partners, our strategic planning goals, and the committees that did that work there. These are all of the places, our financial advisor, and, you know, the financial forecasting that we get done, those are all of the spaces and individuals that we utilize. We sort of lean in on and say, you know, what do they need? And how can we bring that and make it a part of the budget? So tonight, as I stated, is the administrative component of the budget. So tonight's details represent 9% of the total proposed budget for the 22, 23, 22, 23, 24 school year. Sorry about that. Let me start over. Tonight, we are going to lean in on the 9% of the total proposed budget for the 23, 24 school year. So that's what all of the details will be about. And then in the next board meetings to come, we'll dig into instructional benefits and capital. Mr. Tuttle?
Great, thank you. So as I dive into my seventh year of doing the budget, it's amazing how fast a year goes, right, when we come back here and we're doing it again. So as always, I always try to give some budgeting assumptions, and then as with Jeff Smith was here last meeting, he talked a little bit about these as well, but I just want to keep reviewing them just so you understand our pressures from the economics and society right now. So our consumer price index, we're looking at hopefully an average of 4% on all our goods and consumer products. Our tax cap, which we know is law, that's a 2%. We can't go higher than 2% on the levy each year. If you recall, last year, we actually had a $5 million reduction in the tax levy. So teacher retirement system stays steady at about 10%. That's our contribution for all of the employees that are in the teachers' retirement system, the TRS. The employees' retirement system is a little bit more, 16%. In our health insurance premiums, we've seen a massive spike that we pay, looking at about a 15% trending right now. What we're seeing is some of the maybe more procedures that weren't totally critical during COVID. People are probably going back and getting those done now, so we're seeing a spike in in some of those higher cases. So some more things. So BOSI Services usually averaged about 5% for us each year. That's our CTEC. That's our special ed programming. Contractual salaries, about $7 million estimated increase this year. And we have our big one, the voter-approved BOSI's capital project that we, which we did in the fall. That's a $1.5 million expenditure. However, we do get over 70% of that back. So it's, we pay it, and then we get 70% back. So it's a, we we kind of get some revenue from that, which is kind of an excellent expenditure for us. What we've seen in utilities over the past two, since over two-year span is almost a 50% increase in electrical and gas. So the supply and actual delivery of those two utilities has gone up drastically. And you probably see that in your homes as well. And our foundation aid, which is awesome news for us, looking at a 28% increase from last year. And so just, we just got the numbers yesterday, so we're just diving into all, there are some requirements that we have to do for some special programming, but it's very favorable. And as Ms. Creedon said, the Fair Funding Committee was very helpful in getting that. So now we're totally, fully funded, and so that's a very good positive thing for Middletown community. So what I did this year, I tried to break it out a little bit differently. As always, I give the board the pack, the administrative budget in the in the packet, and they can go through each item. Here, what I do here is I just group each category, so like Board of Education, the district clerk. So what these are, these are not the salaries. These are everything inclusive inside what it is like to run the Board of Education. So we have contractual fees, we have overtime things, we have things where we go to NISMA or NISBA and stuff like that. So and then we also have like central administration. You see a spike there. In there is where we have the superintendent hearings contractual line, so we actually see an increase there. But that is not the salary of the central administration. I just want to make sure that everyone's aware of that. It includes supplies and some other items in there. The Department of Finance, which is our, runs a lot of the stuff under me, the accounting and things like that. We see an increase almost 6%. And most of these things are contractual with salaries and and stuff like that. So we have auditing services. We're seeing a little bit increase there in our treasurer department, and contractual increase there. So if we just go down the line, you can see that most of the items have increased, and the the records management has increased. One of the things we've identified, we have a lot of older records that we need, we like to digitize, and we run those through BOSI, so we can actually get aid on digitizing them. We 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 just had a case like from 1980s, right? So we went looking for files and, you know, when I leave here, I want to make sure all the files are in a place where somebody can get them and not calling me where are the files. So that's just one of the proposals that we have on the table. The central printing and mailing, that's our copies, all our copy stuff and salaries downstairs. We lease our copiers throughout the district from BOSI, so we actually get aid on those as well. Oh, I did central mailing twice, sorry. Central data processing, we see an increase there. We have where we need to start purchasing some Chromebooks, replacements for the new, you know, students coming in. Unallocated insurance, that's all our insurance premiums, a little bit increase there. That's for like cybersecurity. That's for all our Board of Education insurance. That's for all the student insurance, vehicle insurance. There's, you name it, we have insurance on it. We have association dues. And then we also have the BOSI's administrative costs, which is usually about 5%, which I talked about a little bit before. And that's all of their superintendent, their business officials, and all those things, their healthcare costs. BOSI Capital, you'll see the massive increase there. That is where the, we'll put 1.4 million into that. And that's really just estimated, because what we're dealing, what they're looking at now is the actual financing of the capital project, right? So rates are changing drastically, right? So we're just trying to prepare for whatever that expense will be. Curriculum and Development Supervision, little bit increase there. We saw a little bit decrease in the supervision of special education. We had an employee that had left the district, so we saw a little bit of a decrease there. And the one up above the, about 2.6 in curriculum and development, that went, that didn't go up as high because we put some of that salaries into the, some of our grants. So we tried to reduce some of the salary line there. Overall, we're looking at probably 9% of the total budget, increased almost 30% this year, and most of that is contractual. We had the realignment of the high school administration. We added some instructional leaders in the elementary schools, and then we also have the BOSIs. And then we're also seeing really just the contractual expenses that we're, what we're dealing with right now. So and and I also talked a little bit about the Chromebook replacement. So right now, it's about 30%. This is the administrative. This is higher than what we've usually seen in the past, but we're seeing a reduction in some other categories. When we get to capital and stuff, we'll see a reduction there. So overall, we'll be really balanced at the end when we come to the final budget. So we're just shifting money into this, the administrative piece for this year. So a couple of things I just wanted to talk about. We're doing the community engagement and informational sessions. We've had several already, December 6th, the 7th, 24th, 26th, where we come and set up and we talk to the community. It's not very well attended, to be very honest with you, so which is kind of discouraging, but we are offering the opportunity for anyone to come and ask questions. We're anticipating when we get closer to when the budget's adopted, we may have more people come in before they go vote. And we encourage them to come in and ask questions about, you know, the budget and the voting and all that stuff. There are, all of the engagements will be at the high school, starting at 6 o'clock right here in the media center. We do have one that's virtual on March 8th, so we'll have sent out an invite on that. As far as our calendar, tonight is February 2nd. We've done the administrative. And we just keep going right down all the way up until the board adopts on April 20th. Then we have a budget hearing, and then Tuesday, May 16th is Super Tuesday, where we vote on the budget and the election. And it goes fast. Once we start, once we kick off this first one, it seems like it's, you know, every week we're doing this thing. But this year with the spring breaks, that's why we have some breaks in here with the calendar. Just the way the spring breaks come on the calendar has made it a little different. But we adjusted some of the board meetings to accommodate that. So up next, on February 16th, will be our. So up next, on February 16th, will be our instructional program. So anybody have any questions?
Any questions from any of the board members? Direct comes from Mr. Tuttle. John?
One, Mike, and I'll, I have some other questions, but I'll mull this over. I think you may have answered this. Under a central administration instructional salary travel allowance, a large percentage rise in that, is that because of contracts, additions?
Yeah, so we have the, some contractual things, and then with our superintendent hearings, so we hire the hearing officers to come in, so we're seeing that as a need. And actually, tonight, you actually approved a financial to transfer money into the contractual line.
Right, for the hearing officers.
Yeah, hearing officers, yeah.
All right, as I say, there's some others, but don't go.
Yeah, so the thing that's important is, when I, when I, when we show the numbers, those aren't their salaries, right? So people will start saying, that's, you know, that's a great salary, you know? It would be a great salary if you had that number, but it's everything inclusive underneath the department of that category.
And the BOSI's capital, that seemed to go up.
Yep, that went up. That's from the, the voters approved the BOSI's capital project.
Right.
$150 million.
That's, that's for the capital, I thought.
Yeah, that's going to start, we start payments this July, or probably, I think August. So, and, but the good news with that is, we spend the money and we get 70% back, right?
That's coshed at 70%. Okay.
So our initial, our big cost will be upfront, and then we can start using the revenue to, you know, to mitigate the cost moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
I want to, I want to just piggyback on that real quick, too, because the way, the way, the way I view it, and I understand we're getting the 70% back, I think that is a great investment, and that's how we have to look at this, because we do such partner, great partnerships with BOSI's. We have the greater number of, you know, students that go there, our scholars go there than any other school in the county. And so, you know, any improvement that BOSI makes to their facilities and to their programs and to the things like that is an investment for us and into our students. So when we see that increase, when I see the increase, you see the number, and immediately there's that sticker shock that comes, but the reality is, it's an investment, we're getting back, we're actually going to get more back for what we put in.
Yeah.
So it's just the momentary, the momentary sting of having to pull it out the pocket and pay it.
Well, the thing is also, too, if you didn't have that program, you would have to expand the buildings here, right?
We'd have to do it here.
Right, so.
And it would be more.
Yeah, we sent 425 students to CTEC a year.
Right.
Yeah. Mr. Gober.
Any other board member have a question? Mr. Gomez?
First, thank you for your outstanding presentations. You have to, your district has had the benefit of your services, and it's an investment in our children. I just want to go back to the records management, and you mentioned we're in the process of having all the records go digital.
Yeah.
So I, and I see that it's like a triple increase from the 2022, 23. So is this increase only temporary, that you see us next, the following year going back to a more reduced number?
Right, and so that increase, so what we, what we always try to do is try to put services through BOSI. So this is actually a BOSI service that we increased, and they do all our digitizing, they actually have a repository, a web-based portal for us, and we go in to look at old contracts, we look at a whole bunch of things, employee records and things that they house for us. So we have some older stuff, and we keep finding some stuff that we want to just keep digitizing.
Okay. And with, I know you mentioned that we're also increasing our expenditure with respect to upgrading the Chromebook supply for our children. Have the district been looking into grants, also could pick up some of those costs, because I know there are grants out there when it comes to technology and students' education.
Yeah, we've been very fortunate over the past several years to have grants pay for them. Right now, we don't have one immediately sitting around here, but we just, they come in, you know, periodically, so we're always looking for opportunities to do that, to buy the Chromebooks that way.
Thank you.
Mike, I do have a question. Since we've spent some administrative changes and retirements at BOSI's, is there any thought that there could be a reduction in administrative salaries and that there?
I don't think so, because I think they've actually added, they restructured and added more staff, so I don't think so.
I was hoping, even, you know.
No, no, I don't think you're going to see that.
Mr. Gomez?
In lieu of the governor's budget presentation, do you see any of these numbers probably changing, shifting one way or the other?
No, no, we haven't seen that in the past few years. Usually it's like a very slight, but Ms. Creeden received information back in the fall, and that was the same numbers that was presented yesterday. So I'm, I'm pretty confident we'll be pretty close to where we're at. Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Bison?
Yes, Mr. Perino?
Just a comment, Amy and Mike, in the past, we've had constituents say that they don't have an opportunity to comment on the budget, but I see here in the past couple of years, there, if you go back, there's plenty of areas where, and opportunities where people can comment, so I think we're, we're very well-covered there right now.
And just a reminder that we still have active, the email address that we established last year, which is budget@ecsdm.org. And, you know, every once in a while, over the course of the year, we get, you know, a question that comes in there, but that's also an opportunity for our community to just, you know, email a question and get a quick answer.
And also, I don't think we could duplicate the CTE program in BOSI, it would cost millions and millions and millions of dollars to do that.
They just don't have the space.
That's it, that's an expense that's well worth it, because this is where I think a number of students will gravitate to as the time goes by.
I think you'd have trouble finding instructors, too, for those programs.
And we helped pass the facility amendment for BOSI, so when that's finished, it, it's going to take a number of years, but it's going to be state-of-the-art, probably the highest ranking in the state at the time. Somebody will catch up, but it's really going to be an amazing place when it's done.
Any other questions?
Any other questions from board members? Thank you very much. Moving on, item number 10 is committee reports. I have an audit committee report, is there anyone else that had a report? The Audit Committee met on Monday evening, January 30th, and we reviewed and approved all of the weekly claims reports, the weeks of October 3, 7, 13, 21, November 4, 10, 16, 23, and 30, December 7, 14, and then January 5, 11, 19, and 25. There were questions submitted, and Shelley and her team answered them for the members of the committee. We also reviewed and approved the Treasurers Report for September, October, November, and December. The Audit Committee has decided that the internal audit this year will be on accounts payable. Other than that, have I left anything out, Ms. Monchery?
You have to approve the minutes.
I have to approve the minutes from October 3, 2022, which are part of your packet. May I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Don't move.
Second.
Moved by John and Vince, was it, or Pastor?
Green.
Okay, John Perino and Pastor Williams. Any discussion on our minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I will say, and I want to compliment our members of the committee, they are reviewing the weekly claims reports, and they are submitting questions, so I appreciate their work and dedication there. We have community members as well as Board of Education members, so they're all doing their fair share and pulling, so thank you. Our next Audit Committee meeting will be March 13, 2023. It's at the board office at 5:30 on a Monday evening. Since there are no other, oh, I need to move on to roundtable, my apologies, just trying to move the meeting along. I'll start this time with Mr. Mitch Williams, and I'll go back and forth.
I just want to commend and just thank Crystal for the job that you are doing, just keeping us on focus, keeping us on point, keeping us updated, keeping us informed. Talk about taking a ball and running with it.
Yes.
You picked up the ball and taken and run with it, and thank you so much for all that you do.
I completely echo your sentiments. You know, there were big shoes to fill, and not being disrespectful, but Crystal came on and she took on the duties and responsibilities of being a district clerk. It's an awesome, big responsibility.
And she also does it with a humanistic approach.
Yes, she does.
Very personal, very light. Thank you.
No, much appreciated, Crystal.
Good luck for the election.
I second, everyone's coming.
Pastor Williams?
So I, I concur, I concur. We've actually, our last, our last three district clerks have been amazing, and we were just, we were just extremely fortunate to, to get Crystal, especially at this time. So I echo Ms. Blumanow's, Blumanow's statement, good luck with the election. I think that you're going to do great, and you're going to do fine, and you've got plenty of help.
Let's carry.
And people to direct, to help you and to support you. And I think it's very important for us as a board to make sure that we stand behind her, or not even stand behind her, but we, we stand beside her and make sure we support her in any way possible. With that being said, I want to go back to what I started talking about a little bit earlier about Black History Month, and one of the things that I didn't mention was the fact that, so that everyone, everyone that's, that's watching and listening understands that black history is American history. And, and so every, every entity, every entity, no matter what you are, has ups and downs, ins and outs. Every entity has good times and bad times. Every entity has victories and has failures. And so that's what we see in history. The good thing is, is that we allow our good times to outweigh our bad times, and allow those things that we've struggled with and the things that we've had in our history that have been not so good. I'm being very nice in saying what I'm saying, but allow those to be the things that strengthen us. There's something that's said that our trials only come to make us strong, and so it's only, it's only through adversity that we get stronger. A hunk of coal doesn't become a diamond until it's subjected to an estimable, an estimable amount of pressure over an estimable amount of years. And even if you look on, you watch ESPN, and you see all of these guys that are muscle builders and whatever the case may be, they have to subject their muscles to immense amounts of weight in order to be able to build those muscles. And so my prayer is, is that whatever struggles that we've had in the past, that we are better for them. In some instances, we are, some instances, maybe we're not. And then my, my prayer is, is that even after the events of the last several years, what we've had, what we've experienced, and what we've gone through, that we don't miss the lessons. We don't miss the lessons that we should have learned during those events. You know, there's, there was so much to learn, and my fear is, is that, my fear is, is that many of those lessons might have been missed in the, in the process, but I do not give up hope. I continue to hold on to the hope that together we're all going to grow, and we're all going to succeed. Your victory is my victory. And so I just want to leave that as we're celebrating, celebrating and observing Black History Month. We're going to have some downs, and we're going to have some struggles, and we're going to have some ups, but let's not forget the lessons. To forget the lessons, to forget the struggles, to forget the things that we've gone through will not allow us to be able to avoid those same obstacles in the future. And so that, I think that's something that Nelson Mandela said, we cannot afford to forget the things that have transpired in the past. If we do, we'll never be able to go forward in the future, and so I'm looking forward to the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor.
One second ago.
Mr. Perino?
You just beat it, Bishop. You beat the clock. That used to be an old program, but I just want to pick up a moment with what you said on, and continue on black history for a moment or two. You know, as you mentioned, black history is American history, Hispanic history is American history. These various, we have months for Hispanic History Month, Women's History Month, Black History Month, but what should happen, and I'm sure it's happening in our classrooms, all the accomplishments should be incorporated into every unit, and you can do this not only in history, you can do it in English, you can do it in science, on and on. So I've said this before, and that's what I know our instructional staff is, is doing this. So that's, that's important. Can't be just limited, any of these months to one month, and then it's all forgotten. No, you can't do that. So that's all I have.
Short this evening, Mr. Perino?
I want to add, Mr. Perino, real quick, I want to add to that, that within the, within the framework, within the educational framework of New York State, much of, much of this diversity, equity, inclusion, the history, whether it be Hispanic, whatever it may be, we've even, there was just a Holocaust, Holocaust remembrance that was just, just passed. All of those things are embedded within New York State, New York State framework, the framework, and so it's a, it's an amazing thing, and I agree with you, our staff is amazing.
Thank you.
Mr. Cresenzo?
Thank you. Yesterday was the 45th anniversary of the Harriet Tubman postage stamp, and during the Obama administration, they decided to put Harriet Tubman on a $20 bill, and they started the process, but unfortunately, the Trump administration did nothing with it. But the Biden administration picked it up, and they're, they're going to align this with our new currency, they're going to have like currency in Europe, they'll have actually pictures that are, you can see through them for security and what have you. So she will be on the $20 bill removing Andrew Jackson, who was a racist, he owned slaves and what have you. So what I have here is a short list of firsts chronologically of African-Americans. So starting in 1773, a poet, Phyllis Wheatley, she's actually considered the founder of African-American literature. College graduates, Bachelor of Arts, Alexander Lucius Twilight in 1823, Middlebury College, Jane Patterson, 1862, Oberlin College. State-elected official, Alexander Lucius Twilight, again, in 1836, the Vermont Legislature. A medical doctorate degree, male, James McEwen Smith, 1837, University of Glasgow. A female, Rebecca Lee Crumpler, 1864, New England Female Medical College. Medal of Honor winner, Sergeant William H. Carney for bravery during the Civil War, received in 1900. Olympic gold medalist, George Poaj in 1904, bronze medal, excuse me, in the 200-meter hurdles and the 400-meter hurdles. Licensed pilot, Bessie Coleman in 1921. Oscar, Hattie McDaniel, McDaniel, and that was quite a controversial, she was, won the Best Supporting Actress in Gone with the Wind, very controversial, but she earned it. Nobel Peace Prize, Ralph Bunch, for, in 1950, for mediating the Arab-Israeli truce, which, if that wasn't done, it would have been horrific, it would have been a violent, violent war. And Martin Luther King Jr., of course, became the second African-American to win the Nobel Peace Prize in 1964. Supreme Court Justice, Thurgood Marshall, 1967 to 1991, we could use him today. Astronaut in space, Guyan Blueford in 1983, he actually flew four missions on a space shuttle. Nobel Peace Prize for Literature, Toni Morrison, we all know that, in 1993. And last but not least, President Barack Obama, 2009 to 2017. And that's, again, that's a very short list, but as, as the board meetings go by, I'm going to add more to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cresenzo. Mr. Gomez?
Well, in that same spirit, I would like to honor the memory of Dr. Jose Barboza, who's more, people more, I guess in Puerto Rico, probably more familiar with him. He was born a slave, and when he, but worked himself to get a college education. When he tried to apply to the University of Puerto Rico, this is the late 1800s, before it became part of the... When he tried to apply to the University of Puerto Rico, this is the late eighteen hundreds, before he became part of the United States, he was denied admission because, because he was of African heritage. He did not give up. He traveled to the United States, went to the University of, of Michigan, was able to obtain, and one, I think, one among the first African-Americans from Puerto Rico to obtain a medical degree. He went back to Puerto Rico, had a successful medical practice. He also became the founder of the island's, island's Republican Party, which at the turn of the twentieth century, was the statehood party for the island. So, that's, and his house is today a museum, and it's very revered by many in the political world of the island. So, a little bit of history.
Thank you. Paula? Or Mrs. Blumanow?
That's okay. I answer to Paula. It's also Heart Health Month in February, so take care of your heart, and take care of your friends' hearts. Be kind and, and do good. I just also wanted to, just, you know, I, I love when our youth sports programs come. I'm really a big supporter. I, I wanna be, I would like to find a way to be more supportive. I've typically been involved in the, with Little League and just, you know, doing whatever I can to support Little League. But, you know, it's not just for kids, you know? Like Little League and youth sports, it's not just for kids. It is, it becomes a foundation of friendships and parental, you know, connection, help with, help with carpooling, other pro, you know, other programs and events, friendships for your children. So, you know, starting our, starting our kids young in these programs is, you know, it's for the full family. You know, gets everybody involved, and, and it just evolves. You know, ultimately, of course, you know, we're gonna see some of those kids kind of progress through our programs and, you know, become, you know, eventually, they're on varsity, you know, the varsity football team, and that's awesome. You know, ten years down the road, I'm sure we'll see some of these kids showing up on the field. But it is the process. And team sports, we know, is a way to connect our kids with each other, but also with their school and their community. So, I just wanna say thank you to our, our board members, certainly, for your involvement and your connection with that. And whatever I can do to support those initiatives, I'd love to get involved. So, thank you.
And just to add on to that, just, just to see those same kids who were playing sports that are employed with the district, and they have the, the Mitty pride.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's just like, wow, when I, when I see them walking in the hallway, and they, they're excited to come work back here. And I'm like, hey, coach, how you doing? And I'm like, wow, so good to see you, you know? And I definitely, I thank Jillian for what she does and her team, you know, just, it's just an amazing thing. Like you said, it builds such a camaraderie, and it's Mitty pride, and it's wonderful.
It's grown a lot in the last several years, especially with your involvement, Freddie's involvement, and rest of the community. Freddie, I won't forget you this time.
Thank you. So, yeah, Paula, that's, that's right on point. Some of my best friends I've met through sports growing up, and now as a coach and a mentor, some of my best friends I've met, parents of the players. You know, so it's, it's awesome. That's how I met Mr. Williams over there. We met through sports, right? And our bond just automatically clicked. So, you hit that nail on the head right there. I would like to also mention that I'm looking forward to the celebration of the Black History Month through the district. I've been asked to participate in a event in Monhegan Middle School. I talked to Mr. Sam Thomas, today's the counselor at Monhegan, and I talked to Principal Dominic Pedonia. So, I'm gonna be over there speaking, and I'm excited for it. My son goes there, so that's, that's also something exciting for him to see me up there speaking. He'll probably make fun of me after, but, you know, but I'm really excited for everything that's going on in the district. And, and all your, your words on Black History Month, it, it means a lot, you know? Being an African-American man in, in this country, you know, it's, it's refreshing hearing some words. And Vince, that was awesome, the rundown. I'll look, I'll look forward to hearing more of what you have. And when I talked about Middletown Sports, I, I missed a couple of people. I definitely, the Middletown Athletics, Dave Coats and Kevin Gleason have been awesome in this process. Mitch knows, we've sat with them a bunch of times, and we've been able to build and, and get space. And, and it's been a, a big turnaround as far as the kids having access to things that they didn't before, you know? So, I definitely wanna commend them. And a couple of names also that are gonna join the Middletown Sports coaching staff. And, and they've been in the buildings before, hopefully, future employees. And there's past employees, Mr. John Merchant and Mr. Daniel Grant, they're coming on to coach. So, they're awesome, like, you know, the biggest part of the Middletown sport is the structure around it and the, the adults. It starts, you know, at the top with the adults, and everybody's just in it for the right reason, you know, for the kids. And like I said, we also have Middletown Youth Sports Next Steps. Mr. Mitchell Williams knows about that, and Everton Brown, where we've rented out the Dosa movie, movie theater twice. Once for the Black Panther movie, and the second for the Avatar movie. So, we look to doing more just, than just movies, and you don't have to play sports to come to the movies, you know? So, we're looking forward to other trips, museums, and parks, you know, when the weather, you know, warms up a little bit. So, yeah, we'll, we'll have, we'll be pushing a lot of information on that. But I just definitely wanna thank the district of Middletown for supporting us and, you know, helping us get these kids moving around. All right, thank you.
Okay. I think I touched on everyone. All right, hearing nothing, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gomez, second. Our next Board of Education meeting is Thursday evening, February sixteenth, at six-thirty, here in the media center. Thank you, everyone.